Meetings and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
As the hour is 6:00 PM, I'm calling the meeting to order. First order of business this evening, hopefully, the board will be going into non-public for about an hour, and then we will be back up here to commence our regular business meeting at 7:00 PM. So with that, I would entertain a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91A 32L.
So moved.
I'll second. Oops, sorry.
There's a motion by Selectwoman Belanger and a second by Vice Chair Cowan. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please.
Selectwoman Chatran?
That'll be an aye from me.
From Cowan.
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye, motion passes 4-0. The board will be in non-public for about an hour.
For this week's report, public works projects continue across town. King tides rising along Swayze Parkway. Information on senior luncheons. A reminder about drafty windows. School updates from SAU 16. A new art exhibition at the Town Hall Gallery. An update from Exeter Public Library. And footage from this year's Halloween Parade. For Exeter TV, I'm Dan Monchek, and this is the Exeter Biweekly Report. Good afternoon, Exeter. Thanks for tuning into the show today. Let's get started. If you haven't already, hit the subscribe button and like this video to help spread word about the show and all things Exeter. You can also head over to the town website and subscribe to the town's email newsletter to get this show and other local news sent straight to your inbox. For our first segment, the Department of Public Works oversees many town projects. From roads to wastewater, they're busy every day making sure the town functions properly. We spoke with the Director of Public Works, Steve Cronin, to learn more about ongoing projects. The Exeter Department of Public Works has a lot of ongoing projects to improve town infrastructure and keep things running smoothly. We caught up with the Director of Public Works, Steve Cronin, to see where these projects are today and how they might affect Exeter residents in the near future. Starting with the Webster Ave Sewer Pump Station Improvement Project. This station's purpose is to pump sewage from the Portsmouth Ave Sewer Shed over JD Hill to the sewer collection system.
So the project started mid-July. Everything has gone according to schedule. The new pump station is now completed at this point. They're currently working on the Force Main replacement.
By replacing the existing pump station and Force Main, Exeter's DPW will increase sewer capacity and replace aging infrastructure in the JD Hill neighborhood and along Portsmouth Ave.
Residents should continue to expect some periodic traffic delays. We're going to have some temporary traffic controls in place, so you may see some wait times where the work's being performed, but other than that, it should be business as usual.
The new sewer pump station is planned to be online and fully operational this winter. Moving on to the West Side Drive Utility Improvement Project. Plans for this project are a few years in the making, but it's finally time for construction to begin.
So the West Side Drive project includes full-depth reconstruction of the entire roadways within the West Side Drive neighborhood. We'll be replacing the water system, the storm drain system, as well as narrowing the existing road pavement down to 28 feet.
Construction is planned to start the week of the 10th and will continue through the winter months with a planned completion for summer of 2026. That brings us to the Linden Street Bridge Rehabilitation Project. After a few months of construction, this project is nearing completion with a planned reopening on November 20th.
So the Linden Street Bridge project was meant to rehabilitate the existing timber bridge by reinforcing the wing walls, addressing some settlement and pavement issues that we had out here.
All that's left to do for this project is to finish up paving the bridge, install guardrails, and complete construction site restoration.
So the road will stay closed till November 20th. At that point, once the paving is done and we reopen the bridge, we'll take down the detour and let residents know that the bridge is now passable.
While these projects may cause inconveniences in the short term, they are essential for the continued functionality of Exeter's infrastructure.
We appreciate the patience and support of the residents as we work to get these done.
The water in the Swamscott River is looking a little higher than usual. Bob Gulacki went down to the waterfront to see how king tides are impacting Exeter.
On November 4th and 5th, a king tide was expected to hit the seacoast of New Hampshire. Although it may not have sandy beaches, Exeter is a seacoast community connected to the ocean by the tidal Swamscott River. According to the National Oceanic Atmospheric Administration, a king tide is a non-scientific term people often use to describe exceptionally high tides. Tides are long-period waves that roll around the planet as the ocean is pulled back and forth by the gravitational pull of the moon and the sun as these bodies interact with the Earth in their monthly and yearly orbits. With the full moon in the sky, the tide was expected to be over two feet higher than normal. We mobilized, setting up several time-lapse cameras across Swayze Parkway to capture the moment the tide pushes water over the banks. At around 6:00 AM, the tides began to rise. Just over six hours later, the moment was finally about to arrive, the moment of impact. Wait, the water's going back down already? It turns out the tides weren't as high as we expected them to be, and thankfully, this time, Swayze Parkway was spared. But this hasn't always been the case. In January of 2024, snowmelt and a king tide combined to inundate Exeter's rear front with water, flooding behind Water Street and much of Swayze Parkway. To better understand this problem, we spoke to Conservation and Sustainability Planner, Kristin Murphy.
The Swamscott River is a tidal river. It flows out to the ocean through Great Bay and the Piscataqua River. So that means twice a day, every day, the water levels on the Swamscott River rise with the tides. And today, we're here because the tides are about two and a half feet higher than average tide, so today is a higher-than-average tide. It's a good time to come out here and sort of visualize what this area will look like under elevated sea level conditions. So we know that sea levels are rising, and we need to look at how our riverside infrastructure is going to perform and be impacted by that. So right now, we have a grant through the state, a coastal resilience grant, to look at Swayze Parkway and evaluate what areas will be impacted and when by sea level rise and what we can do, if anything, to sort of mitigate those impacts or modify the design of the Parkway to accommodate that sea level rise and that tidal flooding.
As a part of this grant project, the town will be hosting a public listening session on December 1st from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, giving residents a chance to talk through this issue and share their thoughts on potential solutions and approaches to dealing with sea level rise.
We want to be sure whatever we do on the Parkway is informed by the community because it's a heavily-used property. The community, you know, really centers a lot of its function around this park, and so we have a public input session on December 1st to get the community's thoughts for what we could do for Swayze Parkway. So we'll provide some information about future flooding conditions and seek input on what solutions the community would support.
If you want to learn more about coastal resiliency seacoast-wide, the New Hampshire Coastal Adaptation Work Group hosts an annual photo contest highlighting king tides. The picturing rising tides competition aims to raise awareness about the changes and impacts to many places we value. The photos of the competition showing extra-high tides give us a glimpse of what daily water levels could be like in the future. For more information on the public listening session and other conservation and sustainability news, check out the Exeter Town Website, exeternh.gov.
One of many events that Parks and Recreation puts on is their Senior Luncheon Series. Gabe Perez met with Assistant Parks and Rec Director David Tovey to learn more about the program.
Every month, Exeter Parks and Rec hosts their Senior Luncheon, a special time for seniors around the town of Exeter to come hang out, socialize, enjoy music, and some delicious food. However, some changes are coming to Parks and Rec and the Senior Luncheon program in the future. Parks and Rec Assistant Director David Tovey explains more.
Happy Halloween, everyone. David from Exeter Parks and Recreation here. So we have two big changes moving forward. We open registration on the first Monday of each month, and you can register online, over the phone, or at our office in person. The other change is we are charging a $3 registration fee. Charging the $3 for registration to our monthly senior luncheons will help spread the grant money out to other programs such as Move With Ease, which we are partnering with one of our sponsors, Bodywise Physical Therapy and Wellness, as well as other older adult programs.
You can continue to register for the senior luncheons, beginning the first of each month, in person at the Exeter Parks and Rec office at 32 Court Street, over the phone at 603-773-6151, or through the town website at exeternh.gov/recreation.
I'd also like to thank our sponsors, United Healthcare, Bodywise Physical Therapy and Wellness, and of course, the Beth Israel Leahy Health Community Grant Fund.
If you have drafty windows, the deadline for energy-saving window inserts is coming up soon. Gabe Perez has all the information you need to know about the town's partnership with Window Dressers and how it can save you money.
The Exeter Energy Committee is hosting a Window Dressers Community Build, assembling low-cost reusable inserts to stop drafty windows, saving heating expenses, and making homes instantly more comfortable. For this year's program, the Energy Committee has expanded the eligible towns to include all of the SAU 16 district. Any resident in Exeter, Brentwood, Stratum, Kensington, East Kingston, and Newfields can order inserts for their home.
This year, we wanted to expand the program, build on that success. So what we've done is to have a larger capacity for the number of inserts we can build. We're going up to 250 this year as opposed to 200 last year.
The time to order is now to secure a fall measuring date for these custom-fitted inserts. Visit windodressers.org to sign up. A volunteer will schedule a time to measure your windows and determine the cost. There are options that are also available for people experiencing financial challenges. Last year, we spoke with Exeter resident Tom Bergeron, who gave us a look at his experience with the program.
I think it's a great program. I highly recommend going forward with it. A bunch of things, you know, there's the energy and cost savings. It's a great program to be part of the community, get some savings, pretty cost-effective to do, and highly recommend being part of the program.
This effort is really about building community as well as providing these really important insulation tools.
The cutoff to order is rapidly approaching. With the deadline coming at the end of November, the inserts will be assembled between January 15th and the 22nd, just in time for a cozy winter. Sign up for your inserts at windodressers.org or email windodressers@exeternh.gov with questions.
Winter is coming. We're starting to feel the cold weather coming in, and we really need to get our orders in by the end of November.
If you're seeing this from outside the SAU 16 system and would want to see a Window Dressers program in your town, you can reach out to the Window Dressers through their website and request the build in your community.
Our next segment is another edition of 60 and 16 from Blue Hawk Media and the Superintendent's Office.
Good morning, SAU 16. This is Christopher Andruski, Superintendent of Schools, and here I am with our November Spotlight School, Main Street School, and accompanying me is Principal Kateret.
Thank you, Dr. Andruski, and hello, everybody. One of the things that I want to highlight today about our school, Main Street, is our robust STEAM program. STEAM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Mathematics. All of our students participate in a weekly lesson with our STEAM teacher, and above and beyond that, our STEAM program offers extension enrichment activities for so many of our students. The reason why we have a STEAM program here at Main Street School is because it fosters problem-solving, creativity, and innovation. And a couple of highlights we're going to do is we're going to talk about our robotics grant and our robotics program for this school year, as well as our hydroponic station. And I'm going to hand it over to our fabulous STEAM teacher, Mrs. Jackie Carlosi.
I'm so excited to share and highlight through the New Hampshire Department of Education Robots Grant that Main Street and Lincoln Street School are partnering with True Robotics. These are developmentally appropriate, grade-level, K-5 coding and robotics that can travel and evolve with the students. I would also like to share about our hydroponics garden. We received this last year through the Wheel Right Trust, and now two, three second-grade scientists to share more.
This is our hydroponics garden. We share the food we grow. Sometimes we eat it, too.
Thank you so much. So many amazing things happening here at Main Street School. We'll see you a couple weeks. And one last thing.
It's a great day to be a junior Blue Hawk.
Thank you and have a good weekend.
The Seacoast Artists Association is hosting its annual member awards art show. Gabe Perez has the story.
The Seacoast Artists Association brings another artist gallery to the Exeter Town Hall in honor of their annual members awards. Guests visiting the exhibition will be able to vote for their favorite pieces, like this one, or this one, or even this painting of a cow. The show runs from today, the 7th, from 1:00 PM to 6:00 PM, as well as November 8th and 9th, from 10:00 to 2:00 PM. Come visit now and vote while you still can.
With cooler temperatures ahead, it's never been a better time to cozy up with a book at the library. But there's more than reading to do, as we hear about in this update from the Exeter Public Library. Good to go.
Hi there, I'm Condra from the Exeter Public Library, here with our busiest November ever. I have so many programs to share with you today, so I'm going to get started. First off, on Saturday, November 8th, at 11:00 AM, we will be having the Colgate 13th return to perform here at the library. They are an incredible a cappella group, and you do not want to miss this event. On Wednesday, November 12th, at 5:30, the library will be hosting a Sesame Street Workshop about building healthy media habits together. This is geared for ages 3 to 5 and their family and caregivers, so we invite you to all come on in to learn and have fun. This event is sponsored by the Sesame Street Grant Program. The next day, Thursday, November 13th, is a very busy day at the library. Starting off at 2:00, we will be hosting a bank fraud awareness program with Meredith Village Savings Bank to learn how to protect you and your loved ones. Then, from 4 to 7, we will be having the grand opening of the Riverwoods Conference Room. Come see all of the beautiful new technology and this very cool space we have at the library. And then to round the day off at 6:00, Tim Harrington will be here to teach Medicare basics. Meredith Village Savings Bank will be back on Thursday, November 20th at 6:00 for another session of bank fraud awareness. So if you can't make the first one, you can make this one, too. The library will be hosting its very first Family Game Day on Saturday, November 15th, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. This is an opportunity to come together and play games at the library, including trying out the brand-new Switch 2. We are taking sign-ups for time slots for the Switch 2, so please contact the library if you're interested in playing. On Wednesday, November 19th, at 6:00, Media Power Youth will be here to teach digital wellness for families. This is an opportunity for families with any-age child to come on in and learn how to stay safe online and learn more about media literacy. The Exeter Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution's Annual Holiday Card Signing Event for active-duty military personnel will be hosted here at the library on Saturday, November 22nd, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. All materials and the sending of the cards will be provided by the Daughters of the American Revolution. And to round out library updates, the Winter Craft Fair will be on Saturday, December 6th, from 10:00 to 1:00. Come on by the library to check out the nearly 30 craft vendors that will be here selling their wares. There is so much at the library to check out, so please follow up on our website or come by the library if you have any questions. And now here's the library director, Julia, with another update from the library.
Hi, my name is Julia Lantner, and I'm the Director of Exeter Public Library. I'm here with an announcement. The library, starting November 15th, will discontinue usage of Hoopla, our digital ebook and audiobook service. We are doing this because of budgetary reasons. We're trying to reduce taxpayer costs, and because we actually have two digital services, we decided to eliminate Hoopla, which was used by less citizens of Exeter. So although you are losing Hoopla, we still have the wonderful Libby app, which also can get you free ebooks and audiobooks here at Exeter Public Library or from the comfort of your own couch. So if you do not have Libby on your phone or tablet or any electronic device, please contact Exeter Public Library at 603-772-3101, or visit the library with your devices, and the librarians there will be happy to show you how to download Libby for free. And thank you all for continuing to be active library users. We'll see you at the library.
For our last segment, we took a trip down to Parks and Rec's annual Halloween Parade and Costume Contest to see Exeter's creativity. Here are some highlights from the event. And then to round the day off at 6:00, Tim Harrington will be here to teach Medicare Basics. Meredith Village Savings Bank will be back on Thursday, November 20th at 6:00 for another session of bank fraud awareness. So if you can't make the first one, you can make this one, too. The library will be hosting its very first Family Game Day on Saturday, November 15th, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. This is an opportunity to come together and play games at the library, including trying out the brand-new Switch 2. We are taking sign-ups for time slots for the Switch 2, so please contact the library if you're interested in playing. On Wednesday, November 19th, at 6:00, Media Power Youth will be here to teach digital wellness for families. This is an opportunity for families with any-age child to come on in and learn how to stay safe online and learn more about media literacy. The Exeter Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution's Annual Holiday Card Signing Event for active-duty military personnel will be hosted here at the library on Saturday, November 22nd, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. All materials and the sending of the cards will be provided by the Daughters of the American Revolution. And to round out library updates, the Winter Craft Fair will be on Saturday, December 6th, from 10:00 to 1:00. Come on by the library to check out the nearly 30 craft vendors that will be here selling their wares. There is so much at the library to check out, so please follow up on our website or come by the library if you have any questions. And now here's the library director, Julia, with another update from the library.
Hi, my name is Julia Lantner, and I'm the Director of Exeter Public Library. I'm here with an announcement. The library, starting November 15th, will discontinue usage of Hoopla, our digital ebook and audiobook service. We are doing this because of budgetary reasons. We're trying to reduce taxpayer costs, and because we actually have two digital services, we decided to eliminate Hoopla, which was used by less citizens of Exeter. So although you are losing Hoopla, we still have the wonderful Libby app, which also can get you free ebooks and audiobooks here at Exeter Public Library or from the comfort of your own couch. So if you do not have Libby on your phone or tablet or any electronic device, please contact Exeter Public Library at 603-772-3101, or visit the library with your devices, and the librarians there will be happy to show you how to download Libby for free. And thank you all for continuing to be active library users. We'll see you at the library.
For our last segment, we took a trip down to Parks and Rec's annual Halloween Parade and Costume Contest to see Exeter's creativity. Here are some highlights from the event.
The library will be hosting its very first Family Game Day on Saturday, November 15th, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. This is an opportunity to come together and play games at the library, including trying out the brand-new Switch 2. We are taking sign-ups for time slots for the Switch 2, so please contact the library if you're interested in playing. On Wednesday, November 19th, at 6:00, Media Power Youth will be here to teach digital wellness for families. This is an opportunity for families with any-age child to come on in and learn how to stay safe online and learn more about media literacy. The Exeter Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution's Annual Holiday Card Signing Event for active-duty military personnel will be hosted here at the library on Saturday, November 22nd, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. All materials and the sending of the cards will be provided by the Daughters of the American Revolution. And to round out library updates, the Winter Craft Fair will be on Saturday, December 6th, from 10:00 to 1:00. Come on by the library to check out the nearly 30 craft vendors that will be here selling their wares. There is so much at the library to check out, so please follow up on our website or come by the library if you have any questions. And now here's the library director, Julia, with another update from the library.
Hi, my name is Julia Lantner, and I'm the Director of Exeter Public Library. I'm here with an announcement. The library, starting November 15th, will discontinue usage of Hoopla, our digital ebook and audiobook service. We are doing this because of budgetary reasons. We're trying to reduce taxpayer costs, and because we actually have two digital services, we decided to eliminate Hoopla, which was used by less citizens of Exeter. So although you are losing Hoopla, we still have the wonderful Libby app, which also can get you free ebooks and audiobooks here at Exeter Public Library or from the comfort of your own couch. So if you do not have Libby on your phone or tablet or any electronic device, please contact Exeter Public Library at 603-772-3101, or visit the library with your devices, and the librarians there will be happy to show you how to download Libby for free. And thank you all for continuing to be active library users. We'll see you at the library.
For our last segment, we took a trip down to Parks and Rec's annual Halloween Parade and Costume Contest to see Exeter's creativity. Here are some highlights from the event. That does it for this week's report. Be sure to like, share, and subscribe to help us spread the word, and head over to the town website and subscribe to the town email newsletter to get this show and other local news sent straight to your inbox. We'll be back on November 21st for the next edition of the show. For Exeter TV, I'm Dan Monchek, and this has been the Exeter Biweekly Report. Have a great weekend, Exeter. Oh, okay. Bye, guys. Bye. Bye. For our last segment, we took a trip down to Parks and Rec's annual Halloween Parade and Costume Contest to see Exeter's creativity. Here are some highlights. I was just reading it. I was finishing reading it. I heard that. I heard it. I was practicing.
It's too windy.
Never written a yell. Good afternoon, Exeter. Thanks for tuning into the show today. If you haven't already, hit the subscribe button and like this video to help spread word about the show and all things Exeter. You can also head over to the town website and subscribe to the town's email newsletter to get this show and other local news sent straight to your inbox. For our first segment, the Department of Public Works oversees many town projects. From roads to wastewater, they're busy every day making sure the town functions properly. We spoke with the Director of Public Works, Steve Cronin, to learn to learn more about ongoing projects. The Exeter Department of Public Works has a lot of ongoing projects to improve town infrastructure and keep things running smoothly. We caught up with the Director of Public Works, Steve Cronin, to see where these projects are today and how they might affect Exeter residents in the near future, starting with the Webster Ave Sewer Pump Station Improvement Project. This station's purpose is to pump sewage from the Portsmouth Ave Sewer Shed over JD Hill to the sewer collection system.
So the project started mid-July. Everything has gone according to schedule. The new pump station is now completed at this point. They're currently working on the force main replacement.
By replacing the existing pump station and force main, Exeter's DPW will increase sewer capacity and replace aging infrastructure in the JD Hill neighborhood and along Portsmouth Ave.
Residents should continue to expect some periodic traffic delays. We're going to have some temporary traffic controls in place, so you may see some wait times where the work's being performed. But other than that, it should be business as usual.
The new sewer pump station is planned to be online and fully operational this winter. Moving on to the West Side Drive Utility Improvement Project. Plans for this project are a few years in the making, but it's finally time for construction to begin.
So the West Side Drive project includes a full depth reconstruction of the entire roadways within the West Side Drive neighborhood. We'll be replacing the water system, the storm drain system, as well as narrowing the existing road pavement down to 28 feet.
Construction is planned to start the week of the 10th and will continue through the winter months with a planned completion for summer of 2026. That brings us to the Linden Street Bridge Rehabilitation Project. After a few months of construction, this project is nearing completion with a planned reopening on November 20th.
So the Linden Street Bridge project was meant to rehabilitate the existing timber bridge by reinforcing the wing walls, addressing some settlement and pavement issues that we had out here.
All that's left to do for this project is to finish up paving the bridge, install guardrails, and complete construction site restoration.
So the road will stay closed till November 20th. At that point, once the paving is done and we reopen the bridge, we'll take down the detour and let residents know that the bridge is now passable.
While these projects may cause inconveniences in the short term, they are essential for the continued functionality of Exeter's infrastructure.
We appreciate the patience and support of the residents as we work to get these done.
The water in the Swamscott River is looking a little higher than usual. Bob Gulacki went down to the waterfront to see how king tides are impacting Exeter.
On November 4th and 5th, a king tide was expected to hit the seacoast of New Hampshire. Although it may not have sandy beaches, Exeter is a seacoast community, connected to the ocean by the tidal Swamscott River. According to the National Oceanic Atmospheric Administration, a king tide is a non-scientific term people often use to describe exceptionally high tides. Tides are long-period waves that roll around the planet as the ocean is pulled back and forth by the gravitational pull of the moon and the sun, as these bodies interact with the earth in their monthly and yearly orbits. With the full moon in the sky, the tide was expected to be over two feet higher than normal. We mobilized, setting up several time-lapse cameras across Swayze Parkway to capture the moment the tide pushes water over the banks. At around 6:00 a.m., the tides began to rise. Just over six hours later, the moment was finally about to arrive, the moment of impact. Wait, the water's going back down already? It turns out the tides weren't as high as we expected them to be, and thankfully, this time, Swayze Parkway was spared. But this hasn't always been the case. In January of 2024, snowmelt and a king tide combined to inundate Exeter's rear front with water, flooding behind Water Street and much of Swayze Parkway. To better understand this problem, we spoke to Conservation and Sustainability Planner, Kristin Murphy.
The Swamscott River is a tidal river. It flows out to the ocean through Great Bay and the Piscataqua River. So that means twice a day, every day, the water levels on the Swamscott River rise with the tides. And today, we're here because the tides are about two and a half feet higher than average tide, so today is a higher-than-average tide. It's a good time to come out here and sort of visualize what this area will look like under elevated sea level conditions. So we know that sea levels are rising, and we need to look at how our riverside infrastructure is going to perform and be impacted by that. So right now, we have a grant through the state, a coastal resilience grant, to look at Swayze Parkway and evaluate what areas will be impacted and when by sea level rise, and what we can do, if anything, to sort of mitigate those impacts or modify the design of the parkway to accommodate that sea level rise and that tidal flooding.
As a part of this grant project, the town will be hosting a public listening session on December 1st from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., giving residents a chance to talk through this issue and share their thoughts on potential solutions and approaches to dealing with sea level rise.
We want to be sure whatever we do on the parkway is informed by the community, because it's a heavily-used property. The community, you know, really centers a lot of its function around this park. And so we have a public input session on December 1st to get the community's thoughts for what we could do for Swayze Parkway. So we'll provide some information about future flooding conditions and seek input on what solutions the community would support.
If you want to learn more about coastal resiliency seacoast-wide, the New Hampshire Coastal Adaptation Work Group hosts an annual photo contest highlighting king tides. The picturing Rising Tides competition aims to raise awareness about the changes and impacts to many places we value. The photos of the competition showing extra-high tides give us a glimpse of what daily water levels could be like in the future. For more information on the public listening session and other conservation and sustainability news, check out the Exeter Town Website, exeternh.gov.
One of many events that Parks and Recreation puts on is their Senior Luncheon Series. Gabe Perez met with Assistant Parks and Rec Director, David Tovey, to learn more about the program.
Every month, Exeter Parks and Rec hosts their Senior Luncheon, a special time for seniors around the town of Exeter to come hang out, socialize, enjoy music, and some delicious food. However, some changes are coming to Parks and Rec in the Senior Luncheon program in the future. Parks and Rec Assistant Director David Tovey explains more.
Happy Halloween, everyone. David from Exeter Parks and Recreation here. So we have two big changes moving forward. We open registration on the first Monday of each month, and you can register online, over the phone, or at our office in person. The other change is we are charging a $3 registration fee. Charging the $3 for registration to our monthly senior luncheons will help spread the grant money out to other programs, such as Move With Ease, which we are partnering with one of our sponsors, Bodywise Physical Therapy and Wellness, as well as other older adult programs.
You can continue to register for the senior luncheons, beginning the first of each month, in person at the Exeter Parks and Rec office at 32 Court Street, over the phone at 603-773-6151, or through the town website at exeternh.gov/recreation.
I'd also like to thank our sponsors, United Healthcare, Bodywise Physical Therapy and Wellness, and of course, the Beth Israel Leahy Health Community Grant Fund.
If you have drafty windows, the deadline for energy-saving window inserts is coming up soon. Gabe Perez has all the information you need to know about the town's partnership with Window Dressers and how it can save you money.
The Exeter Energy Committee is hosting a Window Dressers Community Build, assembling low-cost, reusable inserts to stop drafty windows, saving heating expenses, and making homes instantly more comfortable. For this year's program, the Energy Committee has expanded the eligible towns to include all of the SAU 16 district. Any resident in Exeter, Brentwood, Stratum, Kensington, East Kingston, and Newfields can order inserts for their home.
This year, we wanted to expand the program, build on that success. So what we've done is to have a larger capacity for the number of inserts we can build. We're going up to 250 this year, as opposed to 200 last year.
The time to order is now to secure a fall measuring date for these custom-fitted inserts. Visit windodressers.org to sign up. A volunteer will schedule a time to measure your windows and determine the cost. There are options that are also available for people experiencing financial challenges. Last year, we spoke with Exeter resident Tom Bergeron, who gave us a look at his experience with the program.
I think it's a great program. I highly recommend going forward with it. It's a bunch of things. You know, there's the energy and cost savings. It's a great program to be part of the community, get some savings, pretty cost-effective to do, and highly recommend being part of the program.
This effort is really about building community as well as providing these really important insulation tools.
The cutoff to order is rapidly approaching. With the deadline coming at the end of November, the inserts will be assembled between January 15th and the 22nd, just in time for a cozy winter. Sign up for your inserts at windodressers.org, or email windodressers@exeternh.gov with questions.
Winter is coming. We're starting to feel the cold weather coming in, and we really need to get our orders in by the end of November.
If you're seeing this from outside the SAU 16 system and would want to see a Window Dressers program in your town, you can reach out to the Window Dressers through their website and request a build in your community.
Our next segment is another edition of 60 and 16 from Blue Hawk Media and the Superintendent's Office.
Good morning, SAU 16. This is Christopher Andruski, Superintendent of Schools, and here I am with our November Spotlight School, Main Street School. And accompanying me is Principal Catterett.
Thank you, Dr. Andruski, and hello, everybody. One of the things that I want to highlight today about our school, Main Street, is our robust STEAM program. STEAM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Mathematics. All of our students participate in a weekly lesson with our STEAM teacher. And above and beyond that, our STEAM program offers extension enrichment activities for so many of our students. The reason why we have a STEAM program here at Main Street School is because it fosters problem solving, creativity, and innovation. And a couple of highlights we're going to do is we're going to talk about our robotics grant and our robotics program for this school year, as well as our hydroponic station. And I'm going to hand it over to our fabulous STEAM teacher, Mrs. Jackie Carlosi.
I'm so excited to share and highlight through the New Hampshire Department of Education Robots Grant that Main Street and Lincoln Street School are partnering with True Robotics. These are developmentally appropriate, grade level K to five, coding and robotics that can travel and evolve with the students. I would also like to share about our hydroponics garden. We received this last year through the Wheelwright Trust, and now two, three second grade scientists to share more.
This is our hydroponics garden. We share the food we grow.
Sometimes we eat it, too.
Thank you so much. So many amazing things happening here at Main Street School. We'll see you a couple of weeks. And one last thing.
It's a great day to be a junior Blue Hawk.
Thank you and have a good weekend.
The Seacoast Artists Association is hosting its annual member awards art show. Gabe Perez has the story.
The Seacoast Artists Association brings another artist gallery to the Exeter Town Hall in honor of their annual members awards. Guests visiting the exhibition will be able to vote for their favorite pieces, like this one, or this one, or even this painting of a cow. The show runs from today, the 7th, from 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., as well as November 8th and 9th, from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m. Come visit now and vote while you still can.
With cooler temperatures ahead, it's never been a better time to cozy up with a book at the library. But there's more than reading to do, as we hear about in this update from the Exeter Public Library.
Good to go.
Hi there, I'm Condra from the Exeter Public Library, here with our busiest November ever. I have so many programs to share with you today, so I'm going to get started. First off, on Saturday, November 8th, at 11:00 a.m., we will be having the Colgate 13th Return to Perform here at the library. They are an incredible a cappella group, and you do not want to miss this event. On Wednesday, November 12th, at 5:30, the library will be hosting a Sesame Street workshop about building healthy media habits together. This is geared for ages three to five and their family and caregivers, so we invite you to all come on in to learn and have fun. This event is sponsored by the Sesame Street Grant Program. The next day, Thursday, November 13th, is a very busy day at the library. Starting off at 2:00, we will be hosting a bank fraud awareness program with Meredith Village Savings Bank to learn how to protect you and your loved ones. Then, from 4:00 to 7:00, we will be having the grand opening of the Riverwoods Conference Room. Come see all of the beautiful new technology and this very cool space we have at the library. And then to round the day off at 6:00, Tim Harrington will be here to teach Medicare basics. Meredith Village Savings Bank will be back on Thursday, November 20th, at 6:00 for another session of bank fraud awareness. So if you can't make the first one, you can make this one, too. The library will be hosting its very first Family Game Day on Saturday, November 15th, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. This is an opportunity to come together and play games at the library, including trying out the brand new Switch 2. We are taking signups for time slots for the Switch 2, so please contact the library if you're interested in playing. On Wednesday, November 19th, at 6:00, Media Power Youth will be here to teach digital wellness for families. This is an opportunity for families with any age child to come on in and learn how to stay safe online and learn more about media literacy. The Exeter Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution's Annual Holiday Card Signing Event for active duty military personnel will be hosted here at the library on Saturday, November 22nd, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. All materials and the sending of the cards will be provided by the Daughters of the American Revolution. And to round out library updates, the Winter Craft Fair will be on Saturday, December 6th, from 10:00 to 1:00. Come on by the library to check out the nearly 30 craft vendors that will be here selling their wares. There is so much at the library to check out, so please follow up on our website or come by the library if you have any questions. And now here's the library director, Julia, with another update from the library.
Hi, my name is Julia Lantner, and I'm the Director of Exeter Public Library. I'm here with an announcement. The library, starting November 15th, will discontinue usage of Hoopla, our digital ebook and audiobook service. We are doing this because of budgetary reasons. We're trying to reduce taxpayer costs. And because we actually have two digital services, we decided to eliminate Hoopla, which was used by less citizens of Exeter. So although you are losing Hoopla, we still have the wonderful Libby app, which also can get you free ebooks and audiobooks here at Exeter Public Library, or from the comfort of your own couch. So if you do not have Libby on your phone or tablet or any electronic device, please contact Exeter Public Library at 603-772-3101, or visit the library with your devices. And the librarians there will be happy to show you how to download Libby for free. And thank you all for continuing to be active library users. We'll see you at the library.
For our last segment, we took a trip down to Parks and Rec's annual Halloween Parade and Costume Contest to see Exeter's creativity. Here are some highlights from the event. That does it for this week's report. Be sure to like, share, and subscribe to help us spread the word, and head over to the town website and subscribe to the town email newsletter to get this show and other local news sent straight to your inbox. We'll be back on November 21st for the next edition of the show. For Exeter TV, I'm Dan Monchek, and this has been the Exeter Biweekly Report. Have a great weekend, Exeter. Oh, okay. Bye, guys. Bye. Have a... Bye. For our last segment, we took a trip down to Parks and Rec's annual Halloween Parade and Costume Contest to see Exeter's creativity. Here are some highlights. I was just reading it. I was finishing reading it. I heard that. I heard it. I was practicing.
It's too windy.
I've never heard them yell.
For this week's report, public works projects continue across town. King tides rising along Swayze Parkway. Information on senior luncheons. A reminder about drafty windows. School updates from SAU 16. A new art exhibition at the Town Hall Gallery. An update from Exeter Public Library. And footage from this year's Halloween Parade. For Exeter TV, I'm Dan Monchek, and this is the Exeter Biweekly Report. Let's get started. Good afternoon, Exeter. Thanks for tuning into the show today. If you haven't already, hit the subscribe button and like this video to help spread word about the show and all things Exeter. You can also head over to the town website and subscribe to the town's email newsletter to get this show and other local news sent straight to your inbox. For our first segment, the Department of Public Works oversees many town projects. From roads to wastewater, they're busy every day making sure the town functions properly. We spoke with the Director of Public Works, Steve Cronin, to learn more about ongoing projects. The Exeter Department of Public Works has a lot of ongoing projects to improve town infrastructure and keep things running smoothly. We caught up with the Director of Public Works, Steve Cronin, to see where these projects are today and how they might affect Exeter residents in the near future, starting with the Webster Ave Sewer Pump Station Improvement Project. This station's purpose is to pump sewage from the Portsmouth Ave Sewer Shed over JD Hill to the sewer collection system.
So the project started mid-July. Everything has gone according to schedule. The new pump station is now completed at this point. They're currently working on the Force Main replacement.
By replacing the existing pump station and Force Main, Exeter's DPW will increase sewer capacity and replace aging infrastructure in the JD Hill neighborhood and along Portsmouth Ave.
Residents should continue to expect some periodic traffic delays. We're going to have some temporary traffic controls in place, so you may see some wait times where the work's being performed, but other than that, it should be business as usual.
The new sewer pump station is planned to be online and fully operational this winter. Moving on to the West Side Drive Utility Improvement Project. Plans for this project are a few years in the making, but it's finally time for construction to begin.
So the West Side Drive project includes a full-depth reconstruction of the entire roadways within the West Side Drive neighborhood. We'll be replacing the water system, the storm drain system, as well as narrowing the existing road pavement down to 28 feet.
Construction is planned to start the week of the 10th and will continue through the winter months with a planned completion for summer of 2026. That brings us to the Linden Street Bridge Rehabilitation Project. After a few months of construction, this project is nearing completion with a planned reopening on November 20th.
So the Linden Street Bridge project was meant to rehabilitate the existing timber bridge by reinforcing the wing walls, addressing some settlement and pavement issues that we had out here.
All that's left to do for this project is to finish up paving the bridge, install guardrails, and complete construction site restoration.
So the road will stay closed till November 20th. At that point, once the paving is done and we reopen the bridge, we'll take down the detour and let residents know that the bridge is now passable.
While these projects may cause inconveniences in the short term, they are essential for the continued functionality of Exeter's infrastructure.
We appreciate the patience and support of the residents as we work to get these done.
The water in the Swam Scott River is looking a little higher than usual. Bob Gulacki went down to the waterfront to see how king tides are impacting Exeter.
On November 4th and 5th, a king tide was expected to hit the seacoast of New Hampshire. Although it may not have sandy beaches, Exeter is a seacoast community connected to the ocean by the tidal Swam Scott River. According to the National Oceanic Atmospheric Administration, a king tide is a non-scientific term people often use to describe exceptionally high tides. Tides are long-period waves that roll around the planet as the ocean is pulled back and forth by the gravitational pull of the moon and the sun, as these bodies interact with the earth in their monthly and yearly orbits. With the full moon in the sky, the tide was expected to be over two feet higher than normal. We mobilized, setting up several time-lapse cameras across Swayze Parkway to capture the moment the tide pushes water over the banks. At around 6:00 a.m., the tides began to rise. Just over six hours later, the moment was finally about to arrive, the moment of impact. Wait, the water's going back down already? It turns out the tides weren't as high as we expected them to be, and thankfully, this time, Swayze Parkway was spared. But this hasn't always been the case. In January of 2024, snowmelt and a king tide combined to inundate Exeter's rear front with water, flooding behind Water Street and much of Swayze Parkway. To better understand this problem, we spoke to Conservation and Sustainability Planner, Kristin Murphy.
The Swam Scott River is a tidal river. It flows out to the ocean through Great Bay and the Piscataqua River. So that means twice a day, every day, the water levels on the Swam Scott River rise with the tides. And today, we're here because the tides are about two and a half feet higher than average tide, so today is a higher-than-average tide. It's a good time to come out here and sort of visualize what this area will look like under elevated sea level conditions. So we know that sea levels are rising, and we need to look at how our riverside infrastructure is going to perform and be impacted by that. So right now, we have a grant through the state, a coastal resilience grant, to look at Swayze Parkway and evaluate what areas will be impacted and when by sea level rise, and what we can do, if anything, to sort of mitigate those impacts or modify the design of the Parkway to accommodate that sea level rise and that tidal flooding.
As a part of this grant project, the town will be hosting a public listening session on December 1st from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., giving residents a chance to talk through this issue and share their thoughts on potential solutions and approaches to dealing with sea level rise.
We want to be sure whatever we do on the Parkway is informed by the community because it's a heavily-used property. The community, you know, really centers a lot of its function around this park. And so we have a public input session on December 1st to get the community's thoughts for what we could do for Swayze Parkway. So we'll provide some information about future flooding conditions and seek input on what solutions the community would support.
If you want to learn more about coastal resiliency seacoast-wide, the New Hampshire Coastal Adaptation Work Group hosts an annual photo contest highlighting king tides. The picturing rising tides competition aims to raise awareness about the changes and impacts to many places we value. The photos of the competition showing extra-high tides give us a glimpse of what daily water levels could be like in the future. For more information on the public listening session and other conservation and sustainability news, check out the Exeter Town Website, exeternh.gov.
One of many events that Parks and Recreation puts on is their Senior Luncheon Series. Gabe Perez met with Assistant Parks and Rec Director, David Tovey, to learn more about the program.
Every month, Exeter Parks and Rec hosts their Senior Luncheon, a special time for seniors around the town of Exeter to come hang out, socialize, enjoy music, and some delicious food. However, some changes are coming to Parks and Rec and the Senior Luncheon program in the future. Parks and Rec Assistant Director David Tovey explains more.
Happy Halloween, everyone. David from Exeter Parks and Recreation here. So we have two big changes moving forward. We open registration on the first Monday of each month, and you can register online, over the phone, or at our office in person. The other change is we are charging a $3 registration fee. Charging the $3 for registration to our monthly senior luncheons will help spread the grant money out to other programs, such as Move With Ease, which we are partnering with one of our sponsors, Bodywise Physical Therapy and Wellness, as well as other older adult programs.
You can continue to register for the senior luncheons, beginning the 1st of each month, in person at the Exeter Parks and Rec office at 32 Court Street, over the phone at 603-773-6151, or through the town website at exeternh.gov/recreation.
I'd also like to thank our sponsors, United Healthcare, Bodywise Physical Therapy and Wellness, and of course, the Beth Israel Leahy Health Community Grant Fund.
If you have drafty windows, the deadline for energy-saving window inserts is coming up soon. Gabe Perez has all the information you need to know about the town's partnership with Window Dressers and how it can save you money.
The Exeter Energy Committee is hosting a Window Dressers Community Build, assembling low-cost, reusable inserts to stop drafty windows, saving heating expenses, and making homes instantly more comfortable. For this year's program, the Energy Committee has expanded the eligible towns to include all of the SAU 16 district. Any resident in Exeter, Brentwood, Stratton, Kensington, East Kingston, and Newfields can order inserts for their home.
This year, we wanted to expand the program, build on that success. So what we've done is to have a larger capacity for the number of inserts we can build. We're going up to 250 this year as opposed to 200 last year.
The time to order is now to secure a fall measuring date for these custom-fitted inserts. Visit WindowDressers.org to sign up. A volunteer will schedule a time to measure your windows and determine the cost. There are options that are also available for people experiencing financial challenges. Last year, we spoke with Exeter resident Tom Bergeron, who gave us a look at his experience with the program.
I think it's a great program. I highly recommend going forward with it. It's a bunch of things. You know, there's the energy and cost savings. It's a great program to be part of the community, get some savings, pretty cost-effective to do, and highly recommend being part of the program.
This effort is really about building community as well as providing these really important insulation tools.
The cutoff to order is rapidly approaching with the deadline coming at the end of November. The inserts will be assembled between January 15th and the 22nd, just in time for a cozy winter. Sign up for your inserts at WindowDressers.org or email WindowDressers@exeternh.gov with questions.
Winter is coming. We're starting to feel the cold weather coming in, and we really need to get our orders in by the end of November.
If you're seeing this from outside the SAU 16 system and would want to see a Window Dressers program in your town, you can reach out to the Window Dressers through their website and request a build in your community.
Our next segment is another edition of 60 and 16 from Blue Hawk Media and the Superintendent's Office.
Good morning, SAU 16. This is Christopher Andruski, Superintendent of Schools, and here I am with our November Spotlight School, Main Street School, and accompanying me is Principal Katerap.
Thank you, Dr. Andruski, and hello, everybody. One of the things that I want to highlight today about our school, Main Street, is our robust STEAM program. STEAM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Mathematics. All of our students participate in a weekly lesson with our STEAM teacher, and above and beyond that, our STEAM program offers extension enrichment activities for so many of our students. The reason why we have a STEAM program here at Main Street School is because it fosters problem solving, creativity, and innovation. And a couple of highlights we're going to do is we're going to talk about our robotics grant and our robotics program for this school year, as well as our hydroponic station. And I'm going to hand it over to our fabulous STEAM teacher, Mrs. Jackie Carlozy.
I'm so excited to share and highlight through the New Hampshire Department of Education Robots Grant that Main Street and Lincoln Street School are partnering with True Robotics. These are developmentally appropriate, grade level, K to five, coding and robotics that can travel and evolve with the students. I would also like to share about our hydroponics garden. We received this last year through the Wheelwright Trust, and now two, three second grade scientists to share more.
This is our hydroponics garden. We share the food we grow.
Sometimes we eat it, too.
Thank you so much. So many amazing things happening here at Main Street School. We'll see you a couple weeks. And one last thing.
It's a great day to be a junior Blue Hawk.
Thank you and have a good weekend.
The Seacoast Artists Association is hosting its annual member awards art show. Gabe Perez has the story.
The Seacoast Artists Association brings another artist gallery to the Exeter Town Hall in honor of their annual members awards. Guests visiting the exhibition will be able to vote for their favorite pieces, like this one, or this one, or even this painting of a cow. The show runs from today, the 7th, from 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., as well as November 8th and 9th, from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m. Come visit now and vote while you still can.
With cooler temperatures ahead, it's never been a better time to cozy up with a book at the library. But there's more than reading to do, as we hear about in this update from the Exeter Public Library.
Good to go.
Hi there. I'm Condra from the Exeter Public Library, here with our busiest November ever. I have so many programs to share with you today, so I'm going to get started. First off, on Saturday, November 8th, at 11:00 a.m., we will be having the Colgate 13th return to perform here at the library. They are an incredible a cappella group, and you do not want to miss this event. On Wednesday, November 12th, at 5:30, the library will be hosting a Sesame Street workshop about building healthy media habits together. This is geared for ages three to five and their family and caregivers, so we invite you to all come on in to learn and have fun. This event is sponsored by the Sesame Street Grant Program. The next day, Thursday, November 13th, is a very busy day at the library. Starting off at 2:00, we will be hosting a bank fraud awareness program with Meredith Village Savings Bank to learn how to protect you and your loved ones. Then, from 4:00 to 7:00, we will be having the grand opening of the Riverwoods Conference Room. Come see all of the beautiful new technology and this very cool space we have at the library. And then to round the day off at 6:00, Tim Harrington will be here to teach Medicare basics. Meredith Village Savings Bank will be back on Thursday, November 20th, at 6:00 for another session of bank fraud awareness. So if you can't make the first one, you can make this one, too. The library will be hosting its very first Family Game Day on Saturday, November 15th, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. This is an opportunity to come together and play games at the library, including trying out the brand new Switch 2. We are taking signups for time slots for the Switch 2, so please contact the library if you're interested in playing. On Wednesday, November 19th, at 6:00, Media Power Youth will be here to teach digital wellness for families. This is an opportunity for families with any age child to come on in and learn how to stay safe online and learn more about media literacy. The Exeter Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution's Annual Holiday Card Signing Event for active-duty military personnel will be hosted here at the library on Saturday, November 22nd, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. All materials and the sending of the cards will be provided by the Daughters of the American Revolution. And to round out library updates, the Winter Craft Fair will be on Saturday, December 6th, from 10:00 to 1:00. Come on by the library to check out the nearly 30 craft vendors that will be here selling their wares. There is so much at the library to check out, so please follow up on our website or come by the library if you have any questions. And now here's the library director, Julia, with another update from the library.
Hi, my name is Julia Lantner, and I'm the Director of Exeter Public Library. I'm here with an announcement. The library, starting November 15th, will discontinue usage of Hoopla, our digital ebook and audiobook service. We are doing this because of budgetary reasons. We're trying to reduce taxpayer costs, and because we actually have two digital services, we decided to eliminate Hoopla, which was used by less citizens of Exeter. So although you are losing Hoopla, we still have the wonderful Libby app, which also can get you free ebooks and audiobooks here at Exeter Public Library, or from the comfort of your own couch. So if you do not have Libby on your phone or tablet or any electronic device, please contact Exeter Public Library at 603-772-3101, or visit the library with your devices, and the librarians there will be happy to show you how to download Libby for free. And thank you all for continuing to be active library users. We'll see you at the library.
For our last segment, we took a trip down to Parks and Rec's annual Halloween Parade and Costume Contest to see Exeter's creativity. Here are some highlights from the event. That does it for this week's report. Be sure to like, share, and subscribe to help us spread the word, and head over to the town website and subscribe to the town email newsletter to get this show and other local news sent straight to your inbox. We'll be back on November 21st for the next edition of the show. For Exeter TV, I'm Dan Monchek, and this has been the Exeter Biweekly Report. Have a great weekend, Exeter. Oh, okay. Bye, guys.
Good evening again, Exeter, and welcome back to the November 10th, 2025, town of Exeter. Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting. The board has been in non-public for about the last hour. We're now ready to resume our regular business meeting and note that the time is 7:05. Good evening to my colleagues on the board, respective town staff, those in attendance, and certainly those watching at home. I'd like to start by introducing the board. To my right, Selectman Dan Chartren, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Our vice chair, Selectwoman Molly Cowan, good evening.
Hi, everyone.
To my left, our clerk, Selectwoman Nancy Belanger.
Good evening, everyone.
We have our interim town manager, Melissa Roy, sitting next to Selectman Chartren, good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Our recording secretary, Joanna Bartel, good evening. I'm Nico Papakosandis, and it'll just be the four of us this evening. Selectwoman Gilman had conflict, so. First order of business before public comment is a bid opening for the 2025 Downtown Mobile Vending. And we have one bid for Clyde's Cupcakes, $2,500. And that's the only bid we have. So that's where I think we need to make a motion to...
Usually, we go back and double-check to make sure, yep, that it meets all of the qualifications, and then we would bring it back to, yep.
So I would entertain a motion to refer the 2026 Downtown Exeter Mobile Food Vending bid proposal from Clyde's Cupcakes to the town manager's office to perform due diligence.
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Thank you. I missed that you passed those to Melissa. Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. Next on the agenda is public comment. This is an opportunity for folks to come forward with any comment. We do ask if your public comment is relative to an agenda item. You wait until that agenda item comes up. I'll invite any member of the public. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Keith Whitehouse, and I live on West Side Drive. And first, I'd like to thank everyone for getting that going, Mr. Cronin. The project is underway, and they're making progress already. Very nice. The people in the neighborhood are very excited about that.
Thank you.
Secondly, did conduct a bit of an experiment this past week. Did seven days on the bridge in a Beaver costume and just trying to raise awareness for Pearpoint Park. What I discovered in talking to people passing by was that not many people know about it and know what it is. So right away, we ordered a sign from Staples to put on the fence that says, "Future Home of Pearpoint Park." And we'll be getting that up as soon as it comes in. Also, just wanted to say that I got a lot of respect for the queen waving takes a lot out of you. So I think what I'd like to say and get in your minds is that I would like to make a proposal at some point in the future to get on the agenda to get that park usable in the near future. And I wanted to have that, get that on your radar to understand that. Did you have any questions for me, Ma? Anything? Anyone?
I have a comment. A comment and a commitment. The comment is the Budget Recommendations Committee will be holding their CIP Review Night next week. And as you know, being on the committee, Pearpoint Park Committee has proposed a warrant article for design, and that will be reviewed by the Budget Recommendations Committee, just like any other warrant article. Once the BRC reviews it, they'll make a recommendation to the Select Board, and that's usually the first meeting in December. Okay? So I think as a board, as we do with other requests and requests for warrant articles, we're going to wait to see what the BRC recommends, at which point then we will deliberate and make a recommendation to the voters. That's the comment. The commitment is, once we know what they're going to do and once they make their recommendation, I will talk with you offline, as we do, and see where they're at. And if it's appropriate to do so, we can talk about having you come in and talk with us further about what you'd like to do. Is that fair?
Yeah. That sounds good. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. And you looked good out there. I waved.
I did, too. I was coming home from the gym, and I...
And I was more satisfied this morning when we spoke for you to explain the history of the Beaver costume, because I have to say, I was confused.
Eager to get it open, right?
Got it. Thank you. Have a good night, Keith. Thanks. Okay, next on the agenda is approval of our minutes from October 27th, 2025. We had Selectwoman Belanger and Selectman Chartren and I were present for that meeting. Are there any revisions?
I just have one.
Okay.
On line 323, it currently says, "Planning Board heard an application for 25-3 from Calley Associates." It's Planning Board case number 25-3. So I think it should say case. It almost sounds like an address. And this Calley is spelled differently. So it's J period, C-A-L-E-Y Associates. And if we want to put the address of the application, it's 97 Portsmouth F.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else, Selectman Chartren?
No.
Okay, then seeing no other amendments or revisions, I would entertain...
Sorry, one more. I'm so sorry. It's 324. It just says applicants, and it's applicant. So just the S-S that come off. It was just one applicant. Thank you. So sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. I am really done now.
I would then entertain a motion to approve the Town of Exeter Select Board Regular Meeting Minutes of October 27th, 2025, as amended.
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We have two appointments to take up this evening, the first of which, there's a resignation on the library trustees and under RSA, or rather, in accordance with RSA 202-A:10, the Select Board has the authority to appoint a trustee until the next election. And we have a recommendation from Jenny Medlock, who is the Chair of the Board of Trustees, to request that the board consider appointing Laura Weiskell, who was a former trustee and actually a very dedicated trustee for many, many years, who is willing to come back on and serve the remainder of the term until the next election in March. So are there any questions of the board? And we do have supporting documentation in our package as the RSA giving the board the authority to do this. So seeing no questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to appoint Laura Weiskell as interim library trustee effective immediately to serve until the next municipal election or until a permanent appointment is made in accordance with RSA 202-A:10.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries 4-0. And we also have a memo from Chair Lang Plummer of the Planning Board requesting that we appoint Marty Kennedy as the Planning Board Representative to the Rockingham Planning Commission. And I believe this is to take Mr. Cameron's spot, correct?
It is.
Okay, all right.
I think we had a vacancy. Right now, Gwen English has been doing it by herself, but we have room for more.
Perfect, okay.
And I will add that Marty has been an incredible addition to the Planning Board, Mr. Kennedy.
Indeed, thank you. If there are no other questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to appoint Marty Kennedy as a Planning Board Representative to the Rockingham Planning Commission effective immediately.
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So our first discussion item this evening is just a little bit of housekeeping. When we appointed Melissa Roy as interim town manager, we did not specifically move to give signature authority for certain documents. So this is just to make that official and things up a little bit. If there are no questions, then I would move to... I would entertain a motion to authorize the interim town manager and/or the assistant town manager and/or the Town of Exeter Select Board Chair to have signature authority on all contracts and documents in the town manager's absence.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Thank you. Then we have our second public hearing on the acquisition of easement for the Drinkwater Road groundwater supply well. This is the second public hearing of two, and then we will take up a vote at our November 24th Select Board Meeting. And before I invite Mr. Cronin to speak, we do need a motion to open the second public hearing under RSA 4114A groundwater easement.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Public hearing's open. Good evening, Mr. Cronin.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So at the first public hearing, Selectwoman Belanger had inquired about some comments the Conservation Commission had regarding language in the easement deed, specifically in reference to water withdrawal rights. That was raised by a member of ConsCom, who is actually a hydrogeologist for New Hampshire DES and had expressed those concerns as a way to protect the town and make sure that we had addressed that specifically in the deed. As I mentioned, we had already engaged counsel on those comments, and counsel worked to finalize some proposed revisions to address that. We did then send that over to Phillips Exeter Academy. They reviewed it. They agreed with those edits, and we have since forwarded that revised deed to New Hampshire DES, who has also reviewed it and approved it. So at this point, we feel like we've addressed all the concerns of the various boards regarding the easement deed and looking for your approval of the easement at this point. So with that approval, our next steps would be to finalize the acquisition and then proceed with executing the easement deed and then recording it, so we can then get that back to DES for the final permit approval.
Okay. Any questions?
I have none, thank you.
This is a public hearing, so we'll ask if there are any members of the public. Any questions? There's nobody online, and there are no members of the public in the NOVAC room. So with that, I'd entertain a motion to close the second public hearing for the groundwater easement.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. The public hearing's closed. Thank you, Mr. Cronin.
So per the requirements, the RSA, we will be back at the next Select Board Meeting to request a formal vote of that approval.
And we'll be ready for that. All right, thank you, sir. Have a good night. Next, we have Police Chief Poole in here to talk with the board about some recruitment incentives. Good evening, chief.
Good evening. How are you?
Good.
So yes, when it comes to hiring for a police officer, the benefits of hiring someone that's previously certified are vast. It comes with just knowledge of the job, the experience, the time that it takes to train, get them up and going, the money that's spent on getting them trained and up and going versus someone that's not certified. So we've been, talked with the town office, talks with HR on how can we get more in line, more equal with surrounding departments that are offering hiring bonuses for certified officers. We have two towns that immediately bought us that offer. One offers $10,000, and the other offers $15,000 for certified officers. So we're at the point where we just want to level the field with the other departments. We know what we have to offer as far as the town, as far as our personnel and the people that live in town, but we're up against just that roadblock for a lot of applicants. But not, I'm not saying there's going to be a fix-all for everything. This doesn't mean that, you know, there's plenty of agencies that have bonuses that still have trouble finding people. But at least we'll have that part that we can, I can hopefully recommend that we get versus other areas that I can't really change because of collective bargaining. You know, I can't play with their days off. I can't do things like that that smaller agencies can, you know, for example. But so that's why I'm here tonight.
Okay. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
Sure. So I think exactly what Chief Poole said is balancing our current force with not bringing in new people that are needing to be at the academy or working not out on the street yet and trying to find some balance and bringing in these lateral transfers. Right now, we're having a hard time with that, but not because people don't want to be here, but because they're being offered cash to go other places. And so we'd like to see if we can sort of get that balance back. I do support this. We would fund this out of unfunded positions, and it would be paid within the first year after meeting certain milestones, as the chief put in his memo. We just don't have the number of people looking to get into this field than we have had in the past. And this is, I think, an important step for us to try to balance the force that we have right now.
So just estimating the number, the amount of resources and funding that it takes to recruit and train somebody who's new to policing or maybe even just going to the academy, it sounds to me, if I'm understanding correctly, academy, it sounds to me, if I'm understanding correctly, that it's probably going to balance out, maybe not dollar for dollar, but if you're, if you're hiring somebody that can just step in day one, and you're giving them the sign-on bonus that other communities nearby are doing, it would sort of cancel out what we would be spending to recruit, train, and...
Yeah, it may not be dollar for dollar, but for example, if we need somebody to train our person, we're paying that person that's training overtime, right? And all of those extra hours
Correct.
add up. And if we have a shorter window of training that we have to do because they're a certified officer, we have to get them used to being here in Exeter or being here in New Hampshire. It's far less. So we're saving money on potential overtime and in different areas. So I do think, I can't guarantee that there will be a savings, but I think that it would be very close to balancing out.
Sure.
Yeah, and again, it's, it's getting people in. We want the new officers. That's an important part of our retention strategy, but we'd like to see both coming in the door, not just new officers to policing.
And I think it's safe to say, I mean, particularly since you've been chief, I mean, you really don't ask the board for much unless you need it. I mean, that's been my experience, and I think if folks at home are watching, if they could go back and watch the Police and Fire Subcommittee BRC meeting several weeks ago, you were asked a question at the end that didn't have to do with line items, but with the police department as a whole and the struggles that you're seeing, and I don't think that anybody could have come up with a more thoughtful and considerate answer than you, and it really hit home. And so if folks, you know, are watching this and they're wondering, you know, why we're having this conversation, please go back to that BRC meeting and listen to Chief Poole and talk, and it's, it's a very real struggle, and it's a real challenge, particularly when you're dealing with towns that may not have collective bargaining agreements, unions, and they're just offering dollars that we can't, we can't do. So I think this is a real problem, and this is, I think, a reasonable solution to try to minimize that challenge for you.
Yeah, thank you. I like the, I like the term "balance" that you used. We're not just looking to only do certified people as well. You know, people that have never been police officers before bring a huge benefit to the PD and the town as well.
Right.
But if we can get half, you know, that just, it just reduces the amount of overtime in the shifts that are open to fill. Think about, you know, if they're not certified, they have a three-month in-house FTO program, which is industry standard, and then they have a four-month police academy. There's seven months that they're not on their own being able to fill a shift and answer calls versus six weeks for a certified person. That's, that's huge.
Selectwoman Charter.
I'm in favor of this, and the primary reason is that we're at risk of losing more people that we already have as the burden falls on them increasingly with open, with vacancies. So we have spent a lot of time as a municipality and a lot of money over the last three to four years trying to recruit and retain, and this is just one more effort to, to continue to do that. So I see this as very much a piece of what we've already been doing. And again, it's not just about filling the open spots, it's about not losing the people that are already there who have an increased burden in their work lives because there are so many vacancies. So I'm absolutely in favor of this.
There's nothing else I can really add to this because my questions and things were answered. I am in favor of this also. I think it's going to give you a new tool, in your toolbox, so to speak, but I will tell you, being in a budget meeting, Recommendation Committee meeting, and hearing you explaining what you're up against, I know we need to do this. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Well said. Do you have anything to add?
Just thank you for the time you've spent with my family talking about this.
There are no other questions or comments, then. I would entertain a motion to authorize the Town of Exeter to offer a $15,000 sign-on bonus to New Hampshire certified full-time police officers or out-of-state certified full-time police officers from a recognized peace officer standards and training academy. And it would be outlined with $5,000 at the first pay period of employment, $5,000 after successful completion of the department's field training program and first six months of employment, and then $5,000 to be paid at the last pay period prior to successfully completing the probationary period, which is typically one year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Now, we'd like to invite our Finance Director Cory Stevens to the table and collaboratively, working with our interim town manager, they're going to talk about the Police Station/Fire Substation Construction Management Contract. Good evening.
We're going to talk about a lot of things today. Good evening, everyone. So as Chair said, in your packet this evening is the Construction Management Contract with Ekman Construction for construction management of the police fire, police station, fire substation. Thank you. It's a big document, there are three of them. Thank you for all of you who took the time to give us some feedback ahead of today and try to get your questions answered, so to make you comfortable with the, with the agreement. As I said a couple of weeks ago when I sat up with you, we have been working over the past couple of weeks to finalize this agreement. The documents in front of you, just for a little bit of background, are based on 75% construction draw and completion. We entered into this project in a different methodology than we've used, I guess, in the past in town. Rather than doing a design, bid the project, and then bid, build the project, in this case, we did a design and build. So instead of designing and then going out and asking subcontractors what's it's going to cost, then building it, we've designed it, get to 100%, now we're going to go out and bid the thing for final bids and then build it. Ekman has at 75% gone out and gotten some kind of feel for what the project is going to cost us. We won't obviously know for sure until we get the 100% drawings, but the number that is cited in the contract documents tonight is not a final number. We've been working, in fact, over the last 60 to 90 days with the departments and our team of contractors to bring those numbers down. We realize that we have an appropriation of $15,500 and change, I'm sorry, $17,500 and change, and a $560,000 grant that you guys have also appropriated to the project, and we have no intention of going over those amounts. There are facets of the project that we will reevaluate should we need to, if the numbers are coming in north of what we expect, or we were appropriated, and we may have to make those decisions at some point. So tonight, we're asking to allow the interim town manager to execute the documents in the Construction Management Contract with perhaps not to exceed value at this time, knowing that we will be coming back at some point with an actual 100% value on the construction component of the project.
Any questions for Mr. Stevens, or any additional comments from Ms. Roy?
No, we've been working with legal. That's the other thing I would just add is that, and I'd like to thank Mr. Stevens because he's been leading the charge on this. We've been working together, the group of staff and with our team. So I feel very comfortable with the documents. They've been highly vetted.
Selectwoman Belanger.
Yeah, the only thing I really want to talk a little bit about are using the example of what happened with the siphons, what contingency, what's covered, and if it's something that's beyond the scope of the project, as you said, an oil tank that could have spilled oil or is, do we have coverage through Primex?
Sure. You know, I didn't get the answer to that question, but let's broaden the conversation that you and I had. So the siphons, we found ourselves in a situation where we were, I guess, on a time materials contract originally, so as long as they were there, the price kept going up until we did a fixed bid and the fixed ultimately. With the site work, which site represents our biggest variable, in this, this case, it's a raw piece of land, it had trees on it and a bunch of rocks still up till now, but site does represent our biggest variable going into this. But what our, what Ekman has done, our construction manager, is they're intending to go with a site contractor who will give us, and I'll, I want to cite it, it's an, it'll be an unclassified contract, so there will be a, we'll pay you this much and you will get rid of all the rocks that we ask you to get rid of, and if you find more rocks than you suspected, that's your problem, not ours. Now, that doesn't mean that if they find an oil tank with lots of oil on the site, that that wouldn't be on us, and it would be. And that was what Nancy was speaking to.
Right.
I didn't get a chance to go to Primex
That's okay. We'll follow up.
But as far as the natural elements of the site and the contractor's responsibility to get us a site that we can build a safety complex on, that's on them, not us.
Okay.
And part of why we want to get going on this project early is to take advantage of what, whether we have left this year, and then also just know the site a little better so that if we do, for any other reason, have to make adjustments in our, in our overall budget, we've gotten the biggest contingency out of the way sooner than later.
Good.
Makes sense.
Yes. Thank you.
Mr. Charter.
I want to bore in on that difference in process from previous new construction in the town. Previously, we did design, bid, build, correct?
That's what I understand.
Yes.
Yeah, and now we're doing design-build, and I assume that's because we've had previous projects that have gone over budget, and they're already finalized, and that puts us in a bit of a hole. Whereas with the design-build process, you have more flexibility, you haven't finalized anything yet, and that's why that's a superior approach, especially in the environment that we have now for construction.
That, that may very well be the case. I don't remember why we went design-build versus design-bid-build at the time. I know that Mr. Dean and others who have done big projects in town before have been, had the most experience with design-bid-build. That might be why we went with them, and I don't know why we chose design-build this time.
So, to my recollection, we had, at the time we were making these decisions, had had some projects substantially coming in over budget from what we had done. We had gone out, we had designed the project, we had gotten an estimated cost, and by the time we got back, it was going over budget. In this format, it allows the design team and the construction team to work together while we're going through this process, knowing that we have a maximum number of budget. So we are now designing the project as we're going with the people that are going to be building the project so that we hit the budget number rather than say, well, I'm sorry, all of our bids have come back over. That does require some value engineering. When we first started this project, we were at, I believe, a little over a 2,300 square foot building. We are now down to a 19,700 square foot building because we needed to reduce costs, but we're doing that in time with the architect and the construction team to make sure that everybody is moving towards meeting the final budget. So it is a little bit of a different process than we
So we're not designing ourselves into a corner.
Correct. We didn't
And we are maintaining flexibility by doing design-build rather than design-bid-build.
Correct.
And I love that. I appreciate that we are taking that approach, because we've had too many projects over the last five years where we've had to go back to the voters, and we, I would prefer not to go back to the voters on this project.
We, we 100%
I was going to say, Cory and I agree.
So this is a superior approach to avoid that eventuality.
We should probably have a wrap-up conversation in a couple of years when this is done.
Yeah.
But it feels, I mean, we
This is the, this is the theory we're operating on.
To the ground on this, and especially where Ekman has been able to get somewhat of a comfort level based on 75% as to what the project's going to cost us, and then we value it engineered from there. We still have a little bit of work to do, honestly. I mean, something else is going to have to give, but we're also, as I said in the last 90 days, we've done a bunch of other value engineering on the tech side that we're hoping bridges that gap even more, and it's, it's a fairly small gap at this point, but we are not going over.
Right. And for those of you who have followed along on past new construction, this is a different process.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you both for clarifying that. And I do agree with you, Mr. Charter, and I like this. Are there any other questions for Mr. Stevens?
No.
No? Down here? No? So I believe you need one motion that we talked about last week when we put the packet together, authorizing Ms. Roy, and then, if I understand, Mr. Stevens, you've got three additional motions here that were given to us this evening?
That's correct. That'll be on the architect's side next.
Got it. Okay. All right. So let's finish this first. I had to amend my motion quickly. I would entertain a motion to authorize interim town manager Melissa Roy to execute any and all documents related to the Construction Management Company with Ekman Construction Company for the Police Station/Fire Substation project not to exceed $15,626,567.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, and then apologies for the late, the late second document that I sent, or actually, three documents. That was an oversight on my part, but our accountants, yeah, our architects
A long day.
Our architects have been on board for about 12 months now, and over that time, there has been a need for four amendments to their contract to capture items that were not in their original scope but needed to be done. The first of those amendments was executed shortly after they started in December, and it had to do with site work. The second and third amendments kind of fell through the cracks. I don't know if it's, you know, as we move through the year and move through the project and transition staff into different roles with this project, but when I went asking for them for my files, because I just like to paper my files, they said, well, actually, we haven't even gotten these signed yet. So I think they rattled around and never got signed. We have not paid the contractor for them yet, although I know they've done, they've done work, to be quite honest. This was necessary work, and I'm happy to talk about what the two amendments were, all of them. The fourth one relates to making the building net zero, and we have not done any work on that, and it needs to be executed as well. So what we're looking for tonight is to allow interim town manager Roy to execute the three amendments that have not been executed thus far for the architect so they can move forward with the work.
May I interrupt for one minute? Just want to make sure that we're clear. We've done a lot of work to make the building net zero, but what he's talking about is the final piece that would complete getting 100% to net zero. Just want to make sure.
Thank you for that clarification. Any questions? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say, I can run through what the, what the amendments were.
I'm fine.
I'm good.
Everyone good? Any questions for Mr. Stevens or Ms. Roy?
Uh-uh.
Okay. We have three motions here. First, I would entertain a motion to authorize the interim town manager to execute Contract Amendment Number Two with TGAS Architects for topographical resurvey services.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I'd also entertain a motion to authorize the interim town manager to execute Contract Amendment Number Three with TGAS Architects for wetlands delineation and the site plan modification services.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And finally, I'd entertain a motion to authorize the interim town manager to execute Contract Amendment Number Four with TGAS Architects for the owner-side design and engineering services of a solar canopy.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. I may just sit here because the next one
It's nice and comfortable.
Why not?
Perfect.
Next, we have interim town manager Roy to notify us that there is a police and fire substation project.
I'm just scrolling down. So let me get to the right, right document here, excuse me. Correct. So any municipal building project technically may be exempt from its own town processes, which would be going to the planning board and coming to the select board. In order to do that, you still notify in writing the planning board and the select board. We went to the planning board on Thursday night, and the reason that this is even possible is all of the town staff that work to go through these approval processes are part of our construction team, right? So if we were going to go for the TRC, those people are part of our, our process. So tonight, in your packet, it's a formal notification saying, which you already know, that we're building the police station and fire substation, and if you would like to request a formal hearing, you may, but we're going to keep coming back to reporting to you and, and to the community at large. So if you would consider not
I personally don't feel the need for that.
The planning board, do you want to elaborate? They were fine with not?
Yep. So they were fine, and Finance Director Stevens and I are going to go back in January when we have the 100% construction docs and go through the process, because we do want to hear feedback. But we don't need to go through a formal planning board process, and they did approve that they were okay with that.
I'm very comfortable at the frequency with which the, both of you and the other players within the team update the board, and I think that you've done an excellent job updating the public. I'm fine without a public hearing. Rest of the board feels the same way?
Yes.
And just so people know, I did not, I'm staying on the planning board vote because I'd be voting here.
Thank you. That's all you need from us?
That's all I
Okay. Last on our discussion item, part of the agenda, Selectwoman Belanger had asked for a, in a very good request, for an update on our state and federal grants, and Mr. Stevens delivered as promised.
Yes, thank you.
Sure. I took the opportunity to shorten up the list, really, of, you know, I didn't feel like we needed to keep the SRF loans where there's forgiveness on there anymore. The state has shown us that they are continuing to live up to those obligations, so this is a smaller list than you've seen in the past. I don't even know that there's anything new on the toe, on the upper part. Projects that, you know, have grant awards are paying, where there's no issue there. The, the big one really up on the top is the solar array, and being able The, the big one really up on the top is the solar array and being able to apply for the credit in 2026 as part of our, will be our, maybe one and only tax return that the, you know, the, the town of our files. And we are working, we're working with revision to get the data we need in order to fill out the, the tax return and we will do that in 2026.
Well, you just answered my only question.
And then on the lower section are the potential projects. We have the railroad intersection improvements, the TAP grant that Mr. Sharples had applied for. We understand that we have been looked on favorably with that grant and we're just waiting.
Haven't heard anything else, yeah.
Yeah, right. We haven't heard anything, but no news is good news at the moment. And then one new grant application that has been submitted is the train station improvements for planned design. That's a federal grant and that went in for $800,000 through Economic Development Director Warren.
Okay.
Sorry.
No?
Win them.
Yeah, never win them.
Add it to the list.
It's been a very long day. No, this is wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yep.
Do any questions for Mr. Stevens?
No, I mean, since you last presented this a few months ago, we're in much better shape, so it's good news.
Yeah, Tenhampton has largely come through, that CDFA loan, now that we've finished the project. Everything Kingston Road probably got whittled down as well.
Yeah, there are two smaller awards that just is awarded. Do we have an expectation date, the enhancing climate resilience and the historic?
Yes. So the only reason we haven't received anything is because we haven't submitted, but I know that Director Cronin just actually submitted AP to me to pay, invoices to pay.
Okay.
So we will get reimbursed for those. I haven't been able to track down the historic preservations grants. I need to talk with Ms. Gilman when she's back because I think she took that over perhaps from Dave.
Yeah, my biggest one was a solar array. That's a lot, but.
Yeah, and Planet Playground is imminent as well. We should see that $300,000 shortly.
Yeah.
Good news. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Excellent. Thank you, Corey. While you're there, I think you've got one more memo for us.
I do, yeah. So this would otherwise be a non-warrant, I mean, a non-memo item, but the tax warrants for the December bills, the second half property tax bills for 2025, in the amount of $35,982,76,000 is in your administrative packet this evening to be signed by you. Bills will, as soon as I text our deputy tax collector after this, she will give the green light to our printing company tomorrow to get those bills printed for us.
Mr. Shartrand?
Just a clarification. So we're, we're winding up to collect 35, almost $36 million. Can you just detail that not all of that money is going to the municipality of Exeter?
Ah, thank you.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, and oftentimes in my annual or biannual reports, you'll hear me break down the revenue, right? So 20, you know, roughly 24% of that number is town money and the rest goes to either the schools, the county, or the state.
So.
So we're.
And this is half of the amount we collect over the course of the year, roughly?
That is, right.
Thank you.
Yep.
People always are turned around by that number and because we collect the money, they assume we're spending it and that ain't the case.
So our towns portion will be about 8.4 million dollars.
Thank you.
Rough numbers.
Can you repeat that number?
8.4 million?
Out of the nearly 36 million.
Out of the 36, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up.
It's, it's an important point.
It is very important.
Yes, it is. Very important.
So I guess first order of business would be a motion to.
Yeah. We can do that. I would entertain a motion for the select board to approve the second half property tax bill for 2025 in the amount of $35,982,276?
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Posed? Motion carries.
So the, the second and third warrants in your administrative packet tonight are called the recommittal warrants. And our town manager is also our tax collector in Exeter, which is somewhat unique, as I understand, around the state. When a town manager who is a tax collector leaves and a new one is put in their place, there's a need to recommit the outstanding receivables at the time that the new tax collector is appointed by you all to the new, who becomes the tax collector. So our accountants, Plazek and Sanderson, our auditors, did, performed what is called the greet-upon-procedures where they went through probably a dozen steps to reconcile our outstanding receivables at the point where you appointed Melissa as tax collector, make sure they were right and they tied to the deputy tax collector's MS 61. And then they will provide a report to you all stating that fact, that it had been fact reconciled. But we need to commit or recommit those receivables that are outstanding as of September 2nd, which is the date that you appointed Melissa as tax collector, to tax, to Melissa until such time as, you know.
Thank you for explaining that.
Yeah.
Really, because I kept looking, I go, why do I not remember? Why are we recommitting?
Call me one day, she's like, remind me to talk to you about this. Or where's, just said something. I'm okay. So I got on the phone with Plazek.
This guy's in your checklist must be insane.
Of course we did. So they turned that around quickly.
Okay.
So there are, there are two additional warrants, as I say. One is a warrant to commit the outstanding taxes and the outstanding liens, which total about $1.6 million to Ms. Roy. And then there's a second warrant that commits the outstanding land use change taxes of about $5,000 to Ms. Roy. So two motions, please.
I can't prove it, but this feels very, like the underpinnings of this are in the colonial era.
Good old New Hampshire.
To commit these to a particular individual. Thank you for standing up for this.
I'm just making all kinds of money. No, I'm just kidding.
Well, I appreciate the explanation. I appreciate the two of you staying on top of this so that we get this done correctly.
Thank MMG, too. They were very helpful in this.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, then we've got two motions to consider here. I would entertain a motion that the select board approve the recommittal warrant for property taxes, having uncollected property taxes of $802,072 and 27 cents and unredeemed tax liens of $809,711 and 85 cents as of September 2nd, 2025.
I think it's 803.
You said 800 and it's 803.
What did I say?
The first number.
800, it's 803.
Oh, okay. Let me scratch that. I'd entertain a motion that the board, the select board approve the recommittal warrant for property taxes, having uncollected property taxes of 803, 207.27 and unredeemed tax liens of 809, 711.85 as of September 2nd, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Posed? Motion carries. And then finally, I'd entertain a motion that the select board approve the recommittal warrant for land use change taxes, having uncollected taxes of 5,000 as of September 2nd, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Posed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Ms. Roy, the town manager report, please.
So we'll start right, I was, the new tax rate, because we sort of talked about it already, so please excuse me. But the new tax rate has been set at $18.76 per thousand, which is an increase of 97 cents per thousand, but only 28 cents of that is the municipal portion of the tax rate. So similar to what we just, what we just spoke about. In requests from BRC and some of our sustainability partners, we are only going to be placing a printing request of 500 copies of our annual report instead of 600 copies, trying to reduce some of the paper there. We, we're gonna see how that goes and we'll see if we, you know, miss the mark or not, but we're doing that. The West Side Drive is, is, as Keith said, is, is doing great and we're gonna come back and vote on that on the 20, nope, I have that wrong, excuse me, I'm not quite sure what that is. I apologize, but they are starting over there. And I would also like, I attended ICMA last week, which was down in Tampa, which is the city county managers association conference, which is a great opportunity to stay up and date, up to date on new trends and challenges facing local cities and, and towns. And I'd like to thank Corey for holding the fort down for me while I was there. It's a fantastic opportunity to, to get immersed and remember why you love what you do. So it's a great, it's, it's great to, to go down there, so thank you.
Great. Any questions?
No.
Thank you for that report. Select Board Committee reports, start with you.
I had on October 28th, the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee Commission met for the first time since March, so that was great. The biggest thing that they talked about is, they're going to meet with the Spacy Parkway trustees to look for space for art or sculpture.
Okay.
They're also still talking about a town hall large signboard digital sign. So that's, it's almost like that conversation has started over because it's been so long since they've met. So I did ask them to reach out to Doug Eastman, though, because we don't have to, as a town, follow certain things, but it's a heritage commission area and things like that, so, you know, courtesy to go reach out to them.
Of course.
And that's it for the arts. And then I had a planning board meeting. Actually, I went to the Budget, BRC, for Public Works General on the 29th, then on the 5th also, this is another one, and then on the 6th, November 6th, I had planning board. So there was an application for a lot line adjustment with the Society of Cincinnati and that was approved. There was a conceptual review of a redevelopment at 65 to 67 and a half Main Street, and that's just a preliminary discussion, no votes, just kind of a, a preliminary idea, if you will. And then the planning board case number 25-3, the Jake Haley and Associates, that was in the mind and that was denied. And there were some people that came to the planning board meeting that got up to speak and it wasn't always just to address a certain application. So I, I did suggest that if they really wanted to have these concerns, to come to the select board and come to our public comment and to remind them that as of right now, the CIP is the, looking at the master plan, is in the CIP, but to please come and talk to the select board because they do have some serious concerns and they need to get them out and have a discussion, so.
It's a perfect place for them to come.
Yes.
Thank you for doing that.
Could I make a comment on that?
Please.
That was perfect, Selectwoman Belanger, because general comments have no place in a planning board process, a land use approval process. So this is the place, and if it's not on the agenda, that's what our public comment is for.
Exactly. And they did talk about the project, but then they went beyond it and, and no one asked them to not, but they were very respectful, but I did want them to know they did have an.
Perfect. Thank you so much for doing that. That's it?
Yeah. Yes, that's it for me.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Also, I don't have anything to report.
Okay. Selectwoman Shartrand?
I have three things to report. I attended a budget recommendation committee meeting on 10/29 that Wednesday. The BRC is doing a great job. I attended the one the following week on 11/5. Again, great job by the group of citizens who were elected by the voters to review the budget. The process is, is well underway and is, is being handled very well by those folks. And then finally, on Thursday, the 6th of November, I participated in a great, a changemakers program at Exeter's Town Hall, along with Conservation Commission member Drew Koff and Planning Board member Jen Martel. And the three of us were given the opportunity to pitch a number of citizens who are participating in this program across many towns in the, in the Piscataqua region, kind of Great Bay area, to get involved in their town's municipal government and specifically on land use boards. And it was a great, a great opportunity to talk to them about how real change happens from citizens being involved in those boards, not showing up and reacting to projects. That is not the way to accomplish change. The way to accomplish change is to actually volunteer and be involved. So it was, both Jen and Drew did a great job. It was great to be on that board, that panel with them.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's see, so November 3rd, I met with a resident who had been communicating with me about their neighborhood. And the only reason I'm bringing this up is I want to publicly thank Steve Cronin, Public Works Director, who took time out of his morning to come and join me and meet with the resident. And I think we had a good conversation and I think we walked away with, with our citizen feeling that we're, you know, looking into what their concerns are. It's a lot, but it was nice to be able to go out and, and talk. And again, I'm only bringing it up because I want to thank Director Cronin for taking his time out. That meant a lot to our, our resident. November 4th, I had the E911 Committee and a few street changes will be coming our way soon. November 5th, I joined Selectwoman Belanger and Selectwoman Shartrand at the BRC meeting and had the privilege of hanging out with Corey and Melissa a few times during, since we last met, so that's always a pleasure to him. Correspondence, we have a, a memo that went out to local welfare administrative associates from the New Hampshire Local Welfare Administrators Association regarding the federal shutdown and SNAP benefits and so forth, to make the public aware that that's in our packet as a resource. Reviewing the board calendar, I took the liberty of going into January, and I know Selectwoman Gilman's not here, we can revisit this, but given the fact that we have to have our budget hearing on January 20th, which is the third Tuesday, I sort of started putting some dates together, but as we've already agreed to, we'll meet again on November 24th, December 8th, December 22nd, and then logically, we would convene on January 5th, the new year, and then January 20th would be our budget hearing. And I'll pause there and then we'll wait for Julie to come back and we can, what I'd like to do at the next meeting, I'll work with Corey and Melissa in the interim and try to map out the calendar up to the election in March.
So sorry, it was the 5th and the 20th?
Of January, yes.
So the budget hearing is on a Tuesday, as it normally is?
Correct.
Okay. Do you, I'd like to let people know about our hometown, Exeter.
Please, yes.
Is that okay for me to?
Of course.
So just for people who are interested, Exeter is going to be on the television for New Hampshire PBS, I believe, I'm not even gonna say a channel because someone said what channel and I'm not, I didn't verify it, so. But it's Thursday, November 13th at 9:00 PM. Exeter's featured on, as, on our hometown, so tune in because it should be rather interesting.
Definitely.
And also because our town offices will be closed tomorrow, I'd like to thank all of our veterans.
Well, you stole my thunder. I'm gonna thank you, too.
Well, you can do it, too, because you're more eloquent than I am, so you can go on.
Thank you for bringing that up, that PBS special.
Sure.
Because I think that's gonna be, obviously, we're very proud of where we live.
Absolutely. I'm looking forward to it, so.
And again, the town office is closed tomorrow in honor of Veterans Day and just sincerely thankful to all of our veterans here in town for their service and hopefully folks in town will feel the same way and celebrate them and. hopefully folks in town will feel the same way and celebrate them and be thankful for their service.
Thankful every day.
Anything else? Wow, that was efficient.
All right, I am so behind.
Well, let's adjourn. I'd entertain, uh, a motion to adjourn, Selectwoman Cowan.
So moved.
So moved.
I'll second.
Thanks, Dan.
Any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? We are adjourned, good night, and thank you, everyone.
Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well.